Okay guys, this is, uh, some of the parts, some of the way they called the, uh, regular meeting for June 13th, 2019, a ward. Uh, turn it over to Commissioner Solms, his latest identification.
Long as it's free, just continue guiding and directing everything you say do in the chain, even the recommendations we're making tonight will be the best interest of this community and the time, you know, this thing may ask in your name, please.
Okay, all right, uh, the next thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Uh, what we have tonight is we do need to make, uh, an amendment to the agenda and we need to do that to add the swearing in of officers, um, under the regular agenda as well as pedestrian project grants, which would then fall under the consent agenda. Any questions, uh, to that before we move on and entertain a motion?
I have a motion, everything you just said.
All right, okay, first, I hear second.
Sorry.
All right, any discussion before we move to, um, move to vote? Here are none, all in favor of the, uh, term in the agenda?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, now that the agenda has been amended, do I hear an approval, um, for the agenda moving forward?
No question. Sir.
All right, any discussion before we move to vote? Here are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, now, we were, we're gonna swear in a few officers, uh, it's a little bit of a, a big deal, um, and I wanted to kinda touch on one thing before we move forward. So Chief Curts, uh, submitted the proper forms to retire. Uh, caused a little bit off guard, but, um, just wanted to say openly and in public, uh, clearly we appreciate the years of service that he committed to the town of Dunsville. I know that he was here for some, some trying times, uh, as well as some, some good times. Um, most recently, he's helped out with trying to save us a bunch of money when we moved into the new town hall and, um, clearly being the chief of police, he can't easy job and, uh, we appreciate his years of service at the town of Dunsville. So, uh, having said that, um, anyone? We're ready. We'll be swearing in, um... You wanna go one at once or one at a time?
I was gonna do one at a time.
Perfect, one at a time, so we get, uh...
I guess you...
If you're willing, you love it.
Here, far away. If you're okay. I, uh, do solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
I will be alert and vigilant.
To enforce criminal laws.
To enforce criminal laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
That will not be influenced.
That will not be influenced.
In any matter.
In any matter.
On account of personal rights.
On account of personal rights.
Righteous. That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent, fairway.
Not inconsistent, fairway.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and execute.
Discharge and execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a lawful officer.
As a lawful officer.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
abilities and judgment.
Abilities and judgment.
So, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Maxine, coming up as, uh, captain.
Captain Martin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
To enforce criminal laws.
To enforce criminal laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
That I will not be influenced.
That I will not be influenced.
In any matter.
In any matter.
On account of personal rights.
On account of personal rights.
Righteous. That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent, fairway.
Not inconsistent, fairway.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and execute.
Discharge and execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a lawful officer.
As a lawful officer.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
abilities and judgment.
Abilities and judgment.
So, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Maxine, coming up as, uh, captain.
Captain Martin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
To enforce criminal laws.
To enforce criminal laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
That I will not be influenced.
That I will not be influenced.
In any matter.
In any matter.
On account of personal rights.
On account of personal rights.
Righteous. That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent, fairway.
Not inconsistent, fairway.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and execute.
Discharge and execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a lawful officer.
As a lawful officer.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
abilities and judgment.
Abilities and judgment.
So, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Maxine, Officer Terry Pierce?
Hi, Terry Pierce.
Hi, Terry Pierce.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
To enforce criminal laws.
To enforce criminal laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
That I will not be influenced.
That I will not be influenced.
In any matter.
In any matter.
On account of personal rights.
On account of personal rights.
Righteous. That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent, fairway.
Not inconsistent, fairway.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and execute.
Discharge and execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a lawful officer.
As a lawful officer.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
abilities and judgment.
Abilities and judgment.
So, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Maxine, coming up as, uh, captain.
Captain Martin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
To enforce criminal laws.
To enforce criminal laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
That I will not be influenced.
That I will not be influenced.
In any matter.
In any matter.
On account of personal rights.
On account of personal rights.
Righteous. That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent, fairway.
Not inconsistent, fairway.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and execute.
Discharge and execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a lawful officer.
As a lawful officer.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
abilities and judgment.
Abilities and judgment.
So, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Maxine, coming up as, uh, captain.
Captain Martin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
To enforce criminal laws.
To enforce criminal laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
That I will not be influenced.
That I will not be influenced.
In any matter.
In any matter.
On account of personal rights.
On account of personal rights.
Righteous.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain. The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent, fairway.
Not inconsistent, fairway.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and execute.
Discharge and execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a lawful officer.
As a lawful officer.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
abilities and judgment.
Abilities and judgment.
So, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Maxine, coming up as, uh, captain.
Captain Martin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
To enforce criminal laws.
To enforce criminal laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
That I will not be influenced.
That I will not be influenced.
In any matter.
In any matter.
On account of personal rights.
On account of personal rights.
Righteous. That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent, fairway.
Not inconsistent, fairway.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and execute.
Discharge and execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a lawful officer.
As a lawful officer.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
abilities and judgment.
Abilities and judgment.
So, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Maxine, coming up as, uh, captain.
Captain Martin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
To enforce criminal laws.
To enforce criminal laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
That I will not be influenced.
That I will not be influenced.
In any matter.
In any matter.
On account of personal rights.
On account of personal rights.
Righteous.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain. The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent, fairway.
Not inconsistent, fairway.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and execute.
Discharge and execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a lawful officer.
As a lawful officer.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
abilities and judgment.
abilities and judgment.
So, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Maxine, coming up as, uh, captain.
Captain Martin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
To enforce criminal laws.
To enforce criminal laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
That I will not be influenced.
That I will not be influenced.
In any matter.
In any matter.
On account of personal rights.
On account of personal rights.
Righteous. That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent, fairway.
Not inconsistent, fairway.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and execute.
Discharge and execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a lawful officer.
As a lawful officer.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
abilities and judgment.
abilities and judgment.
So, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Maxine, coming up as, uh, captain.
Captain Martin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
To enforce criminal laws.
To enforce criminal laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
That I will not be influenced.
That I will not be influenced.
In any matter.
In any matter.
On account of personal rights.
On account of personal rights.
Righteous. That I will support and maintain. That I will support and maintain. The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent, fairway.
Not inconsistent, fairway.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and execute.
Discharge and execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a lawful officer.
As a lawful officer.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
abilities and judgment.
abilities and judgment.
So, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Maxine, coming up as, uh, captain.
Captain Martin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
To enforce criminal laws.
To enforce criminal laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
That I will not be influenced.
That I will not be influenced.
In any matter.
In any matter.
On account of personal rights.
On account of personal rights.
Righteous. That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent, fairway.
Not inconsistent, fairway.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and execute.
Discharge and execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a lawful officer.
As a lawful officer.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
abilities and judgment.
abilities and judgment.
So, yeah. Thank you.
Uh, Maxine, coming up as, uh, captain.
Captain Martin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
To enforce criminal laws.
To enforce criminal laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
That I will not be influenced.
That I will not be influenced.
In any matter.
In any matter.
On account of personal rights.
On account of personal rights.
Righteous. That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent, fairway.
Not inconsistent, fairway.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and execute.
Discharge and execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a lawful officer.
As a lawful officer.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
abilities and judgment.
abilities and judgment.
So, yeah. Thank you very much.
Uh, Maxine, coming up as, uh, captain.
Captain Martin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
To enforce criminal laws.
To enforce criminal laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
That I will not be influenced.
That I will not be influenced.
In any matter.
In any matter.
On account of personal rights.
On account of personal rights.
Righteous. That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent, fairway.
Not inconsistent, fairway.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and execute.
Discharge and execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a lawful officer.
As a lawful officer.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
abilities and judgment.
abilities and judgment.
So, yeah. Thank you.
Uh, Maxine, coming up as, uh, captain.
Captain Martin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
To enforce criminal laws.
To enforce criminal laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
That I will not be influenced.
That I will not be influenced.
In any matter.
In any matter.
On account of personal rights.
On account of personal rights.
Righteous. That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent, fairway.
Not inconsistent, fairway.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and execute.
Discharge and execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a lawful officer.
As a lawful officer.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
abilities and judgment.
abilities and judgment.
So, yeah. Thank you very much. And I wish action from my letter. Um, we have a problem with trucks and speeding traffic going down South Massal. And I'm talking about eighteen doors, large dump trucks. Um, we have, uh, two today, two propane gas trucks went up the street. Um, so, we have a whole different console. Um, the, that, um, dump trucks, large and small. So, um, the chief has had his men out there looking at the problem, but it, it's still going on and they're not there.
...in the consent agenda, but things look well, looking good for the year. Oh, yes, yes, please. Our new auditors will be onsite in mid-August. They seem very much more computer people, so we will be sending them up.
So there are no questions that I thought process without.
And we have expressed serious concern about dates, and they know that they have to leave dates. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Patterson? All right, we'll move along to the consent agenda. We did add, I'm in chief, additional project plans to the consent agenda. The action request is to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Do I hear motion?
Motion approved.
I was gonna say who wants the first and who wants to say. So first and second, any discussion before we move to vote? Care to none, all in favor? And any opposed? Motion carries. There's no old business, so we're going to new business. Item A is a private contract with Exxon Enterprises Incorporated for body camera purchases and service agreements. Obviously, you have that in packets. Mr. Cordero, do you want to speak to anything with that?
I'll defer to the here and chief for any comments on the body cameras.
Just as what we've been using as now is kind of how it is, we kind of operate what we're doing. More cloud space to be able to run the operations that were lower quarter in store.
It'll help the attorney's office as well. It incorporates a cloud-based mindset to where, you know, attorney can pull video footage from online. You don't have to download it, and it makes the processing more efficient, so it'll help us cooperate with each other.
Sure.
Better cameras all around, better place.
They change that every half year. So five years, you get three cameras.
Always been a big fan of that because it protects you guys as much as it protects everybody else. So I've always been a fan of that. So are there any questions from the commissioners? To chief or to Mr. Cordero?
Just remember, when you go back on, find the board or something, you're more involved with the board connection. So just taking note that we'll have to go back on again.
All right, so action request appears to direct town administrator to proceed with executing contract between town of Yumsoil and Exxon Services Enterprises. I'm all right, I can say services. And Exxon Enterprises Incorporated for body camera services as described under the board.
Item A, the election proceed with the contract.
Sure. First and second. And do I hear any discussion before we move to vote? Care to none, all in favor? And any opposed? Motion carries. Item A is review the Yumsoil ADC board applicants. We had three in our packets. I reviewed them as I hope that you all have. And I think they're hoping to put some resolution behind this tonight so they can proceed with the planning phases that they have along with the ADC board. As you all know, the current board is at three. We requested that they move to five. So this will put them, if we select two out of the three we have in mind, I'll put them in the five that we have requested as a town. So the applicants at hand, we got Laura Cyrus, we got Todd Casado, and we have Dan Stusman.
And I would like to point out that Mr. Casado is joining us this evening.
Casado, thank you for being here. So I'll kind of open that up to the commissioners and see if we have any questions, concerns. I assume you guys were able to review. So if any things stand out in your mind, or I'm trying to open up for discussion.
All right, questions, I've read through thirty-three.
We're not making serious.
That's from you, not making the memory wish, or are you making it turn? What's that?
Can we nominate dollars? We have to.
You can nominate dollars.
I'd like to nominate Todd to say.
So it sounds like to me the only other choice, or the only other question I can answer is do we want to deal with Dan Stusman? Do we want to deal with Laura Cyrus? Again, I would give these the only two that really stood out, at least from my perspective. Again, I'll give a vote. But it looks like the two gentlemen that were mentioned here actually have some sort of background. One with selling down all beverages to machines and a fleet of them has already had some previous work with the ADC in public safety and things of that nature. So again, those two stood out to me. I'll have a vote, so that's why I say I'm gonna give you guys a little special.
Hope they agree with that. They also said after one, please, those two seem to be good.
Do you want to end that as a motion to approve Todd and then to the one to ADC board?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we have a motion on the table for Todd Casado and Dan Stusman to be appointed to the members of the Yumsoil ADC board. I hear it's second. All right, is there any discussion before we move to vote? All right, care to none, all in favor? And any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the resolution amendment in town of Yumsoil schedule fees and penalties. If you look in your packet, you probably looked just like I did, and was like, where's that? I don't see it.
I saw that, I can certainly draw your attention to the two changes. There is a slight change to the recycling fee for the first recycling cart. They were just increasing that cost by less than a dollar. So that way, the amount that citizens will be paying is the exact same amount that the town is going to be paying this contractor, which is seven dollars. And the, there's kind of added to the fees gap bill, which is a copy. We had a couple of recent requests where citizens, in a very good fashion, requested copies of our comprehensive development plan, which is about a hundred and twenty pages. And we thought that we should just, in standard form, have a standard copy via ten cents a page, a black and white, twenty cents a page for colored copies. If they want, the town to produce those documents, which is in line with what other governments do. So those are the two changes that we recommended to the BCA.
All right, any questions for Mr. Cordero? All right, so the action request appears to approve the resolution. Do I hear motion? Grant, you want the first or do you want the second? Or you can have tertiary or anything you want. So Commissioner Wiggins and Commissioner Solms here. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, care to none, all in favor? And any opposed? All right, motion carries. Item A is to reappoint Robert Barham to the Yumsoil Planning Board. His term would expire May third, first of 2022. Action request appears to approve the reappoint. Do I hear a motion?
Motion approved.
Sir.
First and the second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Care to none, all in favor? And any opposed? Motion carries. Item A is lease purchase contract with Musto Finance to purchase lights for letting park field three. Again, we have the contract in the packets. It was pretty extensive. I know Mr. Cordero, this read through, it's not extensively. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Cordero before we take action? All right, the action request appears to approve the contract. Do I hear motion?
Motion approved.
Any discussion before we move to vote on that?
Yeah, discussion real quick. That includes the electrical as far as now to time. The goal of the time system with Musto is all correct.
Correct, so it's a good question. So the scope of the contract is all inclusive to, so basically, there's two components. There's a hardware component, and there's an electrical installation component. And the panel that we're having installed at field three, which is what we're talking about, is going to be sufficient to add lights to field four if we so choose in the future. And it's going to include a remote-based operation feature, the same that we have now for fields one and two. So that way, using a phone or an internet browser or anywhere that has access to the internet can turn on and off lights, have it possibly be present.
Any additional discussion? All right, care to none, all in favor? And any opposed? All right, motion carries. And item F is consider text amendment for section three oh nine, got one dot three. Eight of Yumsoil's only coordinates to allow new storage, including outdoor storage, as permitted use in a mixed-use district. Motion.
Sure.
All right, we got first and the second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Care to none, all in favor? And any opposed? One minute. All right, motion carries. Getting into reports and other business, I get to go first. Just wanted to send some major kudos. As anyone who's got eyes knows, that we had some pretty tremendous rain and storms over the weekend. Very quickly, turned itself into an emergency situation. I wanted to publicly commend Assistant Chief Rain, as well as Maxie, and Officers Pierce and Bubringer. Those guys were amazing, they worked extremely well together, keeping people safe, closing roads to an even. The inter-agency communication was stellar. There was no hiccups at all, and absolutely did a tremendous job keeping people and towns safe. So I appreciate it, all our work, and you guys played with it. Other than that, the Flatwood Power Kickball Team that I played for won its first game Monday night. And pretty excited about that. Mr. Cordero?
So I would like to echo your gratitude for the professionalism and kind response of the Yumsoil Fire Department, EMS, and Police Department. I think you demonstrated to all who belong to this profession what the public should accept in NACs, in the public service. So I really want to say thank you very much, you know, both you and your hierarchy for the thought of this NAC response. Thank you for taking it all as well. Just a brief report, the town's insurance costs went down about fourteen percent on our commercial and general liability. And the costs also went down on our health insurance, believe it or not. So that was good, just figured I'd point that out. We have executed a solid waste and recycling contract with the Public Services as we directed you to last time. So just a reminder that June will be the last month that we're going to be serviced with waste industries. Did you want to speak on that briefly?
They had a meeting today, a staging meeting at Republic. They're still trying to get you the last bit of information. I should have that on Monday. Flyers that look like this will be mailed out to everybody. And in outright states on the front, this is from the sanitation department, changes are coming, and please read the paragraph or. This will have a summary page on it. Look, I had one just a couple of weeks ago that told me she took a letter I sent her just to look inside. But on the front page here, you have a summary of what's changing, and then more information inside, except I have a few gaps coming. But it will tell you that the garbage, they'll be switching out roll carts to end of this month, and be Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, the twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth. Waste Industries will service you that last Thursday, and if you're bored up on that day, if they miss you that Thursday, they will hit you the next week. One of the things, the recycling carts should be going, the sixty-five gallons, ninety-five gallons, because those are a little bit more expensive, but you'll have it inside of your container of this course. So that's a yay. It also, they're hoping to keep our service stay Thursdays and maybe Fridays, that's one of the last days of working on giving that information. Thank you to Phil, and this flyer says, we will start sending credit card payments hopefully by mid-July. Yay, come on out. It's a lot of things that just excite me, but.
I can see the number of times that I've heard someone walk in and say, hey, can I pay with a credit card? And we haven't been able to do it, so.
Well, yeah, all that information will go in. I'm hoping to have it mailed, I give my information Monday, if it's late Monday afternoon, it's for Tuesday, and then we'll go to everybody, we'll be handing out receipts. Some people probably get dumbed up when we do. I do want to make amends if this information gets out as soon as possible.
Thank you very much, Emily, for her efforts in trying to shepherd this change. As of any change, you know, we're doing this because we feel like all the waste issues is an excellent partner. We certainly appreciate everything they've done. We felt the change would be helpful, we hope for better service, and we hope that the citizens will appreciate it. But again, as any change, sometimes there are hiccups. And so we just ask for everyone's patience. If there's any issues along the way, certainly just contact Town Hall, and we'll do everything we can to work and promote to resolve any issues in the most expeditions manner.
Contact Town Hall at Red Executive phone number.
That's right, in our info system. I do want to write you a brief legislative update. I have received confirmation from Senator Alexander, Representative Barnes, that the state, so there is a ten percent cap on satellite annexations that applies to municipalities. So basically, if someone wants to become a part of the town's corporate limits, and they're not directly connected to a larger part that's currently within the town's jurisdiction, there's a cap on the satellites that they basically can't see that ten percent of the total surface area. There is a state law that already exists that has a list of about eighty municipalities that are exempted from that ten percent cap. And especially as we continue to grow, I thought it would be beneficial to reach out to them, which is the resolution that we directed. I don't think it was the last meeting, the meeting before. At any rate, the City of Astoria actually was already working on legislation on that. Senator Alexander, during committee action, added the town of Yumsoil's name to that piece of legislation. So I think that's great news for us as we continue to develop. I think it will just enable us to be more flexible when allowing voluntary petitions for annexation. You have, I think you, Emily, you have that type of the schedule? Okay, thank you very much. So I'm rather interested in the schedule, or there's a series of emails, we've got kind of a schedule for our brand new workshop. And this is the last thing that I'll bring up. So as a reminder, we've engaged Arant Molderan Associates, which is a competent professional firm, to help Yumsoil come up with a new brand. After the series of emails and some general information, you can see that there's a schedule that basically has events on Monday, June twenty-fourth, the twenty-fifth, which is a Tuesday, and then the Wednesday, the twenty-sixth. These are the individuals that I have invited to these focus groups. And the concept of the focus groups really is to ask individuals, what does Yumsoil mean to you? And through that exercise, develop a brand, an image, slogan, et cetera. If you have anyone that you think should be invited to these exercises or focus groups, please let me know. I'm happy to extend the invitations to anyone that you think maybe include, certainly want to be more inclusive than not. But again, this is just kind of to win and wear. These are all the events that, by the way, are going to take place at Town Hall, in the Conference Room Town Hall, except for at the bottom of the Black Hand column, six, seven, thirty-eight PM, Public Raining Meet, which will take place in this room that we're in currently. But we look forward to being back. Please, just know that I didn't intentionally exclude anyone. I wanted to be as inclusive as possible, but these are the individuals that I've kind of interacted with on a regular basis that I thought might be helpful during the process. But again, I want to include as many people as possible. Any questions about any of that? That's the last thing I have on my plate.
Any questions for Mr. Cordero? Care to none, we'll move along to the commissioners, Mr. Red.
I just wanted to say thank you to Danny and Todd for, she's coming, members of the ADC board, that's a big deal. And it's just nice to have people that want to be part of the community, so thank you for that. And just kind of on a personal note, I just wanted to down the dial, and I feel, I feel really under the weather this week. And so a girlfriend of mine went to Sharon's Deli, gave me some soup, which I just thought was very nice. They didn't have any soup. And so she said, well, I'm just here trying to get something to my friend that's sick, it's a cat. And I said, oh, cat likes the turkey Reuben. So she got me a turkey Reuben. And I just thought that was amazing, that Sue at Sharon's Deli knew what I liked, and my friend, it's just, I love it. And I just wanted to share that story about I love Yumsoil. And I'll have, thank you very much. And I'll tell you that in case anybody was worried about me. Thank you, we'll know better. Jesus, why do we?
Say great way. That's a lot of questions.
Mr. Solms?
Let me bring up something that, we have too many vehicles that own businesses on Main Street. They have this property behind their ABC board. Sometime back, I cannot recall, like, when it was brought up. I passed their names to the town Yumsoil, that they owned this property. Well, they didn't hear anything, so they turned it over to a wheelchair. Guess who come by that property? Now, tell me, Dave, that town Yumsoil come by that property? Is that true or not true?
The property behind the ABC store? The ADC board is going to purchase that property?
Yeah. And they hide it. People are committed to this town, they love this, and they said, why in the world did the town not come to us? I face it on, I know I did, if you look up in the minutes, I named somebody. But I can't fault you, because I don't have a clue. I couldn't answer the question. I did not know the reason. If we get any comments on it, we'll figure it out.
Well, I mean, was the understanding that we were going to person and resell? Because I don't know what we would have done, because we don't physically own the ABC store.
I understand, but people in town younger than you, apparently, could have had the option. Had to have, if you had a man board, ABC, certainly somebody new had it. Who did that buy any name belong to? If we had somebody standing at the ABC board, we'd even like to know, well, who did put the property behind it? Somebody would have had the research to find out it belonged to Allen, and got it, and had it groomed. I couldn't help it. I don't know what to do. They got signed that, and I don't even know who lived in that city. I was so ready to stand him, or ABC, that we were talking about, and they didn't front him. And they said, why? Why didn't they come to us?
Your point is that we should have gone direct instead of going through.
That's what they offered. So I couldn't help it.
I'd like to continue this discussion during individual meetings if we have time. Like, it's getting a little long, sometime, talk you back.
I think you talked to him, really.
Okay. I'll get, I'll get their information. Thank you very much.
The other thing, and I might come in on this, just my own clarification about the vehicles. I thought eighteen-wheeler were the only vehicles that could go through the town. Can a BEP tank, truck not go through the town?
Well, it can, because it has to deliver, and it still has to deliver to the houses and to the residents of the town. So I, pretty much, I think it's twenty-six thousand pounds and over. I think that's where it comes. Anything over that is, can't go down the street.
Have a dump truck?
Depending on the weight, I don't.
So we, we're going full staff?
Yes, we are going to, we have been out there.
That's fine, I just wanted to know, I always heard it was a eighteen-wheeler.
Well, a part of that too, for individual, if construction is happening throughout town. So I mean, dump trucks occasionally are going to have to get in there. And I know Ms. Ballman spoke about that as well, but I think that her major concern was the continued, even though there's no more construction going on, that there's still, there continues to be using those side roads.
And what we're finding out is that the, when we stop across, when we get, when we catch them going down the street, there are two PSs leaving halfway. It's not, we put the signs up, we moved the sign. I moved the sign down at the end of the road at ninety-six, had it, had it built, and it was out. He also did put up the red line, as of two days ago. I'm pretty sure that happened. So we did move the sign, because it was pushed for about two hundred and fifty feet back from the street, so you really could see it. So we did move it out to it, and, but it's, you know, they do, will go down, and it'll sort of work. They did the construction, wherever they're going to do the construction, wherever the running thing is.
Go ahead, Mr. Jackson. Commissioner Solms, do you have anything else? Go ahead, Mr. Jackson. We're gonna break the protocol, we'll go to you next, instead of Commissioner.
Well, here's the problem. Both of those, that street and Winston Street are cutthroat streets. I'm having the same problem. So is there a likelihood of reducing the speed over the fifteen in that area? Instead of twenty-five? Because I think most people see it, it's fifty-two, not twenty-five. I mean, I walk, I walk a dog every day. Cat has her dog, you can't go up and down the street. I don't know if I can say it, I first up, I don't really know, Carrie. I passed, passed the point of, you know, it's just, it's just, it's ridiculous. And still, we put cones out of there because the water's coming through my yard like a white rafting, a white water rafting. Idiots were going around the cones on both sides, going into the field, going into my neighbor's yard, to get around it. It's a, it's a, it's a problem. I mean, twenty-five miles an hour, I know that that seems a lot, but just like our street, Winston Street's not a very wide street either. It's hard to, and there's no sidewalk compatibility, which, you know, that's, that is what it is. It's really hard to maintain a community and log for people on one down the street. All hours of the night, it's not, I mean, it's bad enough to try to pull out to go during any other time that people were coming through there. In the hours of night, I can, I can stand in the backyard and hear people jumping around.
So I think, I know this has been a point of contention for you, Commissioner Johnson, for a while. I think in the, in the long term, the hope is that when we get the signals in the lanes that cross the main, when we get the expansion at five points, that people will tend to stay on Main Street, that they'll be able to get through any more thorough and in time and fashion. But also, the hope there is that once that happens, the need to cut through, Nassau, sorry, yes, thank you. The need to cut through there will diminish itself as well. But I think that we've also kind of grown the idea out there that we can dead-end that road to where it won't have any traffic. That would stop it instantaneously. But until we make these other provisions in town, you really can't cut that, that road out. I think it's worth looking into.
I also will look into reducing speed cables or other methods to achieve the goal that we're trying to achieve, have some, and provide a quarter, here next to me.
Thanks for, you know, the service of the guys, me and I were. Because it was, you know, that water was going across that road, and it could have been, could have been an odd spot. But thank you for the service of police officers, firemen, all those guys.
We know if you're rather watch that out for the money, wouldn't that drive you problems?
Absolutely. I think I believe it's gotta live in. I think it may even believe in.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know, maybe for you, though. The other end of the spectrum is to be, most of the forces, people, what happens if they fail? So we need to have accountability at the DA's office to work and ensure that people are being held accountable for those being changed that are being issued. Captain Timble, for his new achievement, can issue a thousand tickets, but if a thousand is dismissed, nothing happens. So at some point, there has to be accountability on all sides of this. Commissioner Wiggins?
Well, I'd just like to support Commissioner Johnson. I have some north Nassau street that my son lives in, and no worse than vehicles all year tonight is a common problem. In that particular stretch, they stop and line up and race to the top of the hill. Most of them don't have proper exhaust systems, and so they create quite a no. Most of them don't have power exhaust systems, and so they create quite a noise. That's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. And Commissioner Allen?
Just a couple of things. Um, Columbus is really focusing on membership drives. We have one, so that's one more than we had before. Fall festivals coming up, September twenty-eighth. And Frank County Chamber of Commerce, their goal too is to increase membership, um, this year. That's the main, main focus. One of the main focuses. We've got a truck at Appleton tonight. I'll wait and see who wants it. And we cleaned up, um, Chuff Cross Street a couple of weeks ago. I went there, it was Saturday morning, I was by Man Island, the only one out there. There were ten people in L D S, two white boys.
Thank you for your time.
Took out the whole, the whole thing. Now we couldn't, uh, more than eight Saturday. If anybody wants to help, they're not going to, it sucks my heart. Anyway, I want to go early, like, by nine o'clock. To meet at my house if you need to go where, just give me a break and... Wouldn't get, if I, if I had three or four people, we'd get done in the night. I mean, it was three or four people.
Well, and I, I feel like, uh, areas has written about it, I know, we've kind of, um, shot from the mountaintops that trash is a problem. It's true laziness when people throw it out. Um, I feel like, um, knocking wood, I feel like it's getting better. There's still definitely ways to go, so, um, definitely appreciate your emphasis. Um, you're saying this Saturday?
Saturday, yeah. Hasn't been done, hasn't been, so hasn't been...
Yeah, per molly, on the kick, so, no, there's been nobody to, I haven't been, uh... Okay, um, but anything else, uh, right now, Commissioner Allen? Nope. Thank you. All right, turn it over to, uh, just Paul, thank you, John.
Well, thank you. The, uh, uh, May speak project, um, the, uh, surveys for the A rock owners that be providing the temporary construction, which is against, uh, just a few feet typically inside of property. Uh, that project, uh, surveys, uh, actually just before I left the office, we got, uh, got the surveys in. Uh, Sandy, probably, they've been looking out at us and were tracking down the owners and getting that, getting what's right. That hopefully is probably the closest we can do next week. Uh, I tried to make it to that. Uh, again, we are, uh, target is point to, uh, mid-August, uh, expecting a request for, uh, opposition from Federal Highway Commission for, uh, for authorized construction. And going there. Another section at the same time, but, uh, so far, we're all scheduled for us. Uh, that's clearly one of us in the town, which also means we're going to lose those funds, uh, sitting out here. Uh, we have, uh, the Win Park Trail project, uh, we're working on that. And that, um, recent mission of, uh, of scoring for that, for competition, for other similar fight in, uh, grassland projects. And we have a submitted for the first fifteen months. And, uh, that's again, talking to down boys, five or six of them in the past and continue to drive from there. We have a, um, the next, uh, unified down boys workshop. The five board is July the second, six p.m. right here. On Saturday, of course, Tuesday, July is, uh, following that. And again, uh, all of this stuff's kind of been reviewed one time. With the five board, uh, we're just starting to work on the journey map. And, uh, and also, uh, we have a good conversation on storm water. Sandy, uh, put a bill on the brick floor myself, uh, back in the years, uh, every time I approach that, the storm water. So many surprises, I want to say. Uh, I would mention about annexation, uh, just the, the last, uh, slightly, we have, we have one, we have three potential commercial sites. Three of those are all satellites. For, uh, what we've been expecting with the policy, only close to coming months, we'll probably see some of those coming. Need that legislation and, uh, make sure we have a follow-up. That's all I'll stick with, uh, the, uh, welcome presence to the town.
Anything else now? Nothing. Any questions, Mr. Parker? I'll let it go. Sorry. All right, um, Mr. Parker?
Still delivering feedback from opposing counsel, in terms of, um, I am working with a single opposing counsel on a mission practice, but, uh, I must make it, uh, in the industry. So he was forgotten about us and, uh... Hopefully, I, I'm hoping he will follow on that quicker, sooner anyway. It's still going to be quite a process of advertising, getting the sale together, getting the contract, finding all this stuff. That being said, I think we do have a couple of things, some contracts potentially to mend. So I'll give it to him now and see if we can make sure we get a hold of the video as quickly as possible. Unfortunately, it's been three steps back to get one step ahead, it seems like, which will, more or less, probably not as soon as we go. So, uh, I think we're getting there, it's just going to slow really a little bit. As far as other issues, it's been a pleasure working with Phil, he's very professional. He goes extremely fast on things. So he's just going to enjoy to be able to get things back at him just as quickly as we can forward. The way that's actually issues coming down. So I'd like to commend him on his leadership and ability to get them started.
Uh, anything else right now?
No, we're going to do it.
Uh, Chief Kim, um, we respond to about a variety of four and five calls about the month. Nine in addition, about twelve requests that we responded to. And there's a, and that's not including the EMS calls that we respond to that, uh, the most, uh, other than what will run, uh, this traffic everywhere and all that stuff. All right, uh, anything else to add right now? Okay, all right, thank you, sir. Um, Assistant Chief Green, fire department.
Good evening. Uh, would like to, again, offer a reminder, you know, this is a police department, everyone that was sworn in and promoted, uh, I think that's exciting. Um, on that, I think that, um, I, I think we showed up Saturday that you're working relationship with the town, Fire Department, Police Department, uh, they've stepped in some areas to improve. And, uh, Chief Kim and I were going to plan to meet to, uh, have a discussion on where we can improve, uh, and be better. Uh, next time, I would have found a next time, but in our business, we're planning the next time. Uh, I did appreciate, uh, Mr. Cordares and, uh, Mayor Collin and, uh, Mary Flowers were coming out to some of the scenes to make sure everything was going good. We, uh, they closed down about five, six streets. It multiple homes flooded. Uh, the river level is near Commissioner Johnson's home. Uh, we did have a vehicle that became stranded in those floodwaters because, uh, as you well aware, when you flood your vehicles engine, the motor shuts down, uh, and then you become a boat. But Ugliesion is able to make it to the other side of the Florida, completely knocked out. So, but we remind everyone, uh, you need to, uh, turn around and don't drown. Uh, it may look like it's, it's not a lot of water, but moving water, only a few inches will let your vehicle undo it. Um, and, uh, we want to remind people that floodwaters are not a place to play or for kids to go out and hang out in. Uh, they can quickly become very dangerous. Uh, Fire Department responded to eighty-five calls for service today. Uh, we're at four hundred and ninety-six calls here today. If you have a high fire exercise on Saturday, it is not in town, it's, it's out with, uh, Grassville Fire Department just beside Crystal County, on Maze Four Road off Ninety-Six West. So if you see smoke, uh, in that area, it's a large farm, old farmhouse that they're going to burn on Saturday. And then, uh, closing out, um, the Fire Department's banner for, uh, balding, and some of its first loss due unfortunately, floodwater. But do you think you can get rough, do you, uh, know what we're going to have? That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. All right, uh, turn it over to, uh, Mr. Smith, Fire Department.
So, uh, Kickball's been a big success right now. As you can see, it's, uh, bringing a lot of people in town together. Um, we're probably getting close to almost three hundred people out there on Monday nights. Uh, two trucks are saying they're doing, uh, they're making a lot of money and are eager to continue to come back out and do it. So, doing the party, Monday nights, Kickball's for a time, six to ten. Um, Monday night, All-Star baseball started this week. Um, tournament, uh, bracket's got announced for our coach football teams. They'll be going to Nash County. Uh, they'll be facing teams like Roseville, Clayton, Onza County, Nash County, Nashville, and, uh, both our teams will be there in the Little Seven bracket. Two events, you go to Aberdeen, then the state, and talk to events. So I feel really good about both our teams' chances there. Uh, we worked out a schedule with Deepway Arena. They're going to send two of their teams here and we're going to send one to them in a scrimmage. Uh, we're going to post that date online, so if you want to, I'm going to support, uh, the coach pitch and deep pitch, uh, All-Star teams against Deepway. And we'll tune up, uh, that'll be a, so we can public on the good stuff and see who trucks out there. Um, that, also today, we brought on two recreation aids to help enhance our night experiences with our sports. Uh, we are still looking for a couple more. And, uh, Carson and Summer are their names, so if you see them around, make sure you park them there. Uh, this one's for family. Uh, reasons for bringing them on, our two pants are game day experience and, uh, Fall Baseball. Playing on having speakers at each field, kids' names to be called when they, uh, walk up to, uh, make you feel a little bit special and all that good stuff, as well as eliminating parents having to teach school. So now we will have, I remember we were keeping the official book, uh, as we had quite a big receipts. From the parents that they're not know, uh, they know everything. So that, that's good there and, and they'll continue on in basketball and so on and, uh, and so forth there. Um, I appreciate you guys proving our lights. I think that's going to just add to the amount of programs and people that we can serve and all that. So, uh, I do appreciate that and, uh, that's it.
I have something I want to add. The Kickball was a huge rave at the Chamber of Commerce meeting last week. Conversation live for about ten minutes. I just mentioned it, all the guys we played were, they had to hit a tub of beer and yada, 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 so it's a...
A beer.
It's well.
A barrel of alcohol.
It's well known, so, good job.
I appreciate that. All right, so that was it for you, uh, Mr. Smith, is that correct? Anything else to add? Um, do we have any updates, anything, comments, and everything there? Go ahead, correct.
Everything in base is good. I just note that, uh, you know, during the heavy rains that we had at the weekend, there was a cold rush, things of that nature with debris, um, both plant debris and makeshift structures kind of got washed away from people's yards. So if we see any of that, just know that we're aware that we're going to get rid of that in, in an expedition's manner, make sure that, uh, there's some cold works, intermittent streams, uh, that were affected. So, uh, just know that we're working on that and we appreciate your patience.
All right, um, no need to go into closed session, so I would call this meeting adjourned.